And.
There you go.
Now it's on. Next meeting dates of January 16th, 2020, February 1, 2020. That's 8:00 AM on a Saturday, joint with Advisory and Capital Budget Committee. And then minutes of December 5, 2019, and that is the consent agenda. The second item is consideration of land use and development items, which includes Apple Hill Estates at 31 Hunting Lane and Pine Residences at 41 North Main Street, and compiled 40B comments due to mass housing, January 17, 2020. The third item is consideration of administration items and routine business. There are no finance director items this evening, so that could be removed. Under Town Administrator, 2020 Annual Town Meeting Warrant Development Update. The warrant closes January 8, 2020. Appointment of Monitoring Agent for Affordable Housing. Appointment of Oil Burner Inspector Rick Aston, term to expire 6/15/23. Appointment to Historical Commission of Adam J. Redboard for a term to expire 6/15/23. And Personnel Updates, Select Board Member Reports. And then Adjourned to Executive Session Not to Return to Open Session. Item 1, MGL Chapter 30A, Section 21A, Subsection 3, to discuss strategy with respect to threaten potential litigation if an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the litigation position of the town, and the Chair so declares, Library. Item 2 is MGL Chapter 30A, Section 21A, Subsection 2, to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel, Town Administrator. That's it.
Thank you. Do I have a motion to approve this agenda?
It's not moved.
Second. All in favor? Great. Next on the agenda is the consent agenda. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
It's not moved. Second.
All those in favor? Okay. So we'll move right to item 2, the consideration of land use and development items. With the holidays, we've been receiving a few letters from a few of the boards in town. Letter from the Butters Attorney. Thank you. Today, we got a couple more. The DPW Director sent a letter, and we have a draft letter, in total draft form, that the town is working on. But we're still lacking a few. I got an email from Neil Kessler of the Conservation Commission, who said they're not meeting till January 9, so we're not going to see anything from them until after that meeting. They did offer to send it under separate cover, but if they could have something ready, I'd almost prefer to have everything go together. I'm not sure where you guys are at at the Board of Health. Have you?
So we discussed it. I think that Lisa and Daryl are putting something together on behalf of the board.
Okay. Do you need to have any idea of timeframe?
I thought it was today, but I am skeptical if you're asking me.
Okay.[224.12][224.12](laughing). So I think those two are critical pieces that we want included, obviously. Yeah, go ahead, Paul.
Didn't you secure a extension of time to respond to January 17?
Yes, David did. So we have time, I'm just saying, like, so it's not, like, I know we talked about getting a letter ready tonight, but we have time to incorporate. Daryl, I actually was just asking about the Board of Health letter when you thought you would have your letter ready.
It said in the middle of next week.
Okay. Thank you.
So I would think, just to finish the point I was making, I don't know why we have to rush this if we have until the 15th, and Mass Housing has agreed to the 15th.
Seventeenth.
Seventeenth. Why do we need to rush that? We have a meeting already scheduled with this board for the 16th.
I'm not suggesting that we rush it. I'm suggesting that we actually work on it, and so we're not rushing it on the 16th.
And we could have a special meeting on the 9th, which is a week Thursday from today, if necessary. I'm just suggesting, from my review of the letter, the draft letter, that it does need some work, and I also think that we should have all the information, particularly from the two most, the boards that have the jurisdiction over the issues that are not Trump by 40B, which is the Wetlands Protection Act under the jurisdiction of the Conservation Commission, and health issues under the jurisdiction of the Board of Health. Those two jurisdictions are sort of fundamental to anything we do.
I agree. So I think we shouldn't finalize it tonight, absolutely, because we want to incorporate those. But I think we should be, we should at least discuss the major points that we've already received from Planning Board and DPW and the Fire Department, and make sure those are, kind of get a general guideline of where we want the direction of our letter to be.
Yeah, and I think the earlier the better. This is an important letter, and I want to incorporate all of the relevant board's inputs, so the sooner we can get it, these are complex letters, they require revisions. This clearly is a first draft, needs a lot of work. Not only does it need input from the missing boards, but...
Yeah, that's what I was going to add, is I would like the summary of each board's input to be in this letter. Our letter shouldn't just say, "I feel this way." It should reflect, almost like an executive summary, if you will.
I agree, because what's missing in here is, it says, "We oppose the project," but it doesn't say why.
I know.
Right.
And just to build on your statement, I think we need to say, "We oppose it for the following reasons."
Correct.
A, B, C.
Yes.
See the letter of the Conservation Commission. See the letter of the Historic Commission, for example, had some issues. Agree completely.
True, but I think the Select Board's letter has to really pull out those things that pop, and those things that oppose the seven key features, and stay focused on that. Because there are a lot of good aspects in a lot of the letters we've received so far, but to what extent we call, we call some of them germane, and just make it look like we're throwing a hole, or throwing like a bunch of spaghetti at the wall and stick with sticks. We've got to highlight those real, real key things, because their attention span's only so big. Mass Housing's probably not going to read all the attached letters and so on like that. And our cover letter, not just summarize it, but hit the things that pop. I do have a couple specific comments on that cover letter, if now's the right time.
Yeah, go ahead.
Item number three, it's good, but it has to be more specific and stronger. It says, "The town understands a shortage of affordable housing in Sherburne, and with the overwhelming public support of town meeting, and talks about the 2017, 86% vote." It doesn't talk about the specific vote. I think it's much more powerful to say that, and I believe, and we can confirm this with Carol Marple, "I believe it's the second largest town meeting by attendance ever held, with overwhelming support for a specific project that would put the town at its 10% threshold, is of such a strong statement." It really is. That we're essentially there, and we're currently working with the developer, and meeting with them to actually, you know, they've been before us, to try to make it work. So it's one of those things that's huge. It wasn't just a small town meeting, it was a huge town meeting, got overwhelming support, and puts us in safe haven, and talks about the specific project. It's nice when they talk about like the A, B, C, D, and those are very strong things, but to still administrative things, like, you know, the form of a master plan is important, and that's in there, and it calls out, but it's still things a lot of communities do. How many communities have the second largest town meeting in their history, with 86% vote to support? Not many. And we're there, and we're ready to be in safe haven, and I think that's very, very strong. I'd talk about specifics of that project.
Just on one of those items you just mentioned, I think it is important that we do mention the housing production plan, because the application by the applicant said we didn't have one. So I think we need to point that out, that we do.
And maybe call, call out even separately as a numbered thing, versus when the A, B, C, Ds and Es that's called out here, or make those a more clear bullet list, you know, something like that, to kind of accentuate that.
Can I just add to what Eric said? First, I agree with your comment, Eric. I think we probably all agree with that comment. But we also have some projects that have been approved and are ongoing, like 59 North Main Street is under construction.
Absolutely.
We have a project down on Washington Street.
Whitney Farms.
Under construction.
Yep.
And Whitney Farms. So there's a number of projects that are ongoing. Why don't we do a list of all the projects that we've permitted, and that we are allowing to get built, to show that we are actively working on addressing the housing issues in the town?
Yeah.
And Eric, you hit the point that I'm most concerned about. I'd like the granularity, I'd like the numbers to be in here.
Yeah.
The Coolidge Crossing, all these others. And give context, how many housing units we currently have, you know, 14, 40, and show the numbers. I just think the more granularity, the better, because, and it also wasn't 86%, it was 86.7%.
Thank you, Chuck. That's important.[618.35][618.35](laughing).
And to even, and to call out that that vote alone would put us into the 10% threshold, meaning that we're basically there, that we're right there, and just, you know, working to make that final part happen. My second comment is that I'd like four to be more strong. It just, it sounds too soft, and either remove it, or put something in where it's, "The town is prepared to work with developers who identify and estimate long-term planning, development, and fiscal impacts." Either talk about where specifically we're willing to work with people on this property.
Right.
Or talk about we have a history of working with them. Something that's a little bit stronger that, you know, show evidence of it.
Well, I think if you take what Chuck just said, and just say, "Not, we're not prepared to," we are working with developers, and then that's where you could list those projects, right there. These are the ones we're currently working with.
Yeah, you could pull it out of three and move it into four, where you're, that's where you kind of list the projects that we're...
It's not like we're preparing to. We have been, and are.
Yeah, we have a history. We have a strong history of supporting affordable housing, so it's not just, this is the latest NIMBY type thing.
Yes.
That, you know, we have a real strong history. And again, that guidance document, that guidance document we had specifically called that out.
And with number five, I think we'd want to be more specific, like, that's where we would reference the other letters.
Yeah.
You know, referencing the items from the Planning Board letter, and the Conservation Commission, and the Board of Health.
But not just reference the letters, George. I think we should capture the key part.
Oh, absolutely.
Each of those.
Headline.
I mean, why, like, the Historic Commission is objecting to this because it's a historic building.
Absolutely.
So instead of just saying, "Go look at a letter," which they may or may not look at.
Capture it.
You need to say, right then and there, "There's a historic building right there that needs some protection."
Yeah.
Yep.
And if we do that with each of the letters, so I'm agreeing with you, George.
Yeah, I agree.
Paragraph five, your idea's a good one, just needs to be beefed up.
Yes.
And that was Jeff's idea, too.
Yeah. But as Eric says, in a sort of a head, I like bullet things. People just, you know.
Yeah, they're going to skim.
They're not going to read prose. So anything you can do to bulletize it, put facts, like Chuck said, like something that stands out. But you want the headline there, and then you can read, you know, Conservation Commission's letter, if you have time, but...
And they definitely have to be strong. If you say things like, you know, "We're prepared to work with developers," you can't just say that. You have to really say, "We have done this, we have a history of this," and, because I guarantee that, you know, the recipient of this reads that sentence all the time.
Yes.
Every NIMBY community, they probably read that thing, and we have to, you know, assure them that we are not that.
Right.
And for the same reason that we're talking, I would suggest that the background section could be moved to an appendix or something. It's pretty, I'm not sure if it's required format-wise, but it's pretty...
David, is that something...
You put it at the end, so it's not bad. Putting it at the end's not bad, and it's a beginning. One big paragraph, so no one's going to read it anyway.
Yeah, yeah.
Right, I wouldn't want it at the beginning.
It's just posterity. When you pull up the letter, that you can trace it to...
Yeah, the history.
Putting it at the back's not bad.
So another comment I would make is, I'd actually like to see what the attachments are, and I particularly want to make sure, we got an excellent letter from the lawyer for the Butters. I'd like to make sure that we include that, even though it's not a town board or a committee. The most recent letter had to do with lack of site control. They actually did some legal work, and cited some cases and all of that. Let's throw that in, too, if we could.
I agree, that was...
And so I think we should include a letter from the Board of Health, the letter from the Conservation Commission, which we don't have, the letter from the Fire Department.
We have DPW.
DPW.
Like a formal letter from the Police Department. He sent an email, but we don't have a formal letter from him yet.
I think we need to encourage him to be a little more definite than saying, "I can't comment until I see a traffic study."
Right.
Because typically, you don't have traffic studies at this early stage in a process, and I've seen police chiefs give much more stronger statements about traffic impacts based on his experience. The fact that there's going to be additional curb cut to the north, he could really hit a home run there. So if we could, so I wouldn't use his current version.
No, 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 that's what I'm saying. I'd rather have a, oops, sorry, Rick, like a letter on, like Sean sent us today from DPW, and like we got from the Fire Department, a more formal letter, like...
Right, highlighting how critical this intersection is.
Yes.
It's not, I don't think it's in the top three in terms of accidents, but...
Traffic-wise, it's got to be...
But traffic-wise...
Traffic volume is huge.
Traffic volume's got to be number one.
It's the only stoplight you have in town. But would it come, be better if it came from, because, you know, Rick and Zach are on traffic safety, it would be better if the letter came from traffic safety rather than...
I think it's stronger to have a letter from both the Fire Department and the Police Department.
They're used to seeing a Police Department letter.
Yeah.
They're used to seeing a Fire Department letter.
Okay.
But I also want to include the DPW letter.
Mm-hmm.
Want to include the Planning Board letter, that was excellent. Thank you, Planning Board, for getting it to us so early. There was a Star Commission letter, which I found to be excellent. I think that should be included also.
And I think we have a basis for including the letter from the Butters Council. When, as part of the background, we mentioned the open public session, I think we can just slip it in there. I don't know whether or not they're used to, it's certainly not an official town document, but it's a good, specific letter that we should include.
Well, that highlights another point I was going to make. The letter we have right now says, "We've attached all these documents." I think the board should go a little further and say that we are incorporating it by reference, or we are endorsing, or we are somehow embracing it.
It's not just FYI.
It's not just FYI. We're just not throwing all these attachments in there, and good luck, you know, go read it. We're actually, I'm actually, the things I've read, I agree with. And I agree with the statements made in the Butters lawyer's letter also, but also all the work of the town boards. I agree with every letter that's, there hasn't been anything I've disagreed with. So why can't we say in there?
We should.
That we oppose this project for the following reasons.
It's the basis.
And see, and for the reasons stated in the attachments, exhibits, you know, A through H, which we incorporate by reference here, or something like that.
But I would suggest, again, some microformatting of it, you'd actually do two sets of attachments or appendices. One would be comments from boards, committees, and staff, and next one would be other comments, and it'd be a Butters, and whoever. So we've got a lot of individual ones. I forwarded some that I've received, and we guess put a generic comment from a couple of Butters or other.
I think we do have to be careful with the front page really getting a strong executive summary, because if they do skim it, we want to make sure we're very clear in that first page, the highlights from all the different departments, and that everyone, like, yes, we say, the Select Board's opposed, but we want to say the Planning Board is opposed for these, you know, we want to make sure that's right up front and center.
And it's the basis for our vote.
Right, and, I mean, even addressing the seven points. In fact, we have a lot of issues within those seven points to say, "These are the reasons."
You want a statement that says, "We oppose this project because it fails to do X."
Right.
Very clear, short, simple, so they understand what it is we're trying to say.
Well, and I like Eric's suggestion, we tie it to the seven criteria that they've listed as the relevant criteria.
Because they've already set the guidelines. If we follow it, then that's...
That's why they have them there.
Right, exactly.
It was in that section of that guidance document, I didn't bring it with me tonight, which actually also talked about if the community is making a good faith effort to actually fulfill its housing, and actually would be a clear distinction as to why they would oppose it, so...
So to Paul's point earlier, I think maybe we should meet next Thursday, because if we're getting the Conservation, I think they said the 9, and if the Board of Health is in the middle of next week, which I think is the 8.
Conservation is meeting on the 9th.
Yeah.
So we won't have anything from then by then.
But we'd have the Board of Health's.
Yeah. We'd have a number of them. I think we should...
And it may take more than one meeting to finalize this.
Yeah, that's one point.
I'll have to participate remotely. I'm in Washington all day that day.
I have something, but I can probably cancel it.
How hard is that, Dave? I know there's some logistics in setting up remote participation.
Unless you meet like a Tuesday, unless you do the 14th and 16th, get all comments, put them in, get a draft proposal, and then look at the draft, approve it on the 16th, something like that.
You could do that, too.
I know people like to meet on the Thursdays, but I mean, it seems like I could...
I could do both Tuesday and Thursday that week, the 14th and 16th.
Yeah.
That actually works better than the 9.
Make sure if they're in, they're in. If they're not, they're not, and make that, the pencils down, and then we can see it. Do a final refinement of the actual letter there, and then final, final.
Vote it on the 16th, so then it could...
Yeah, yeah.
The 14th.
I could...
Does the 14th work for you, Paul?
It doesn't. I have a Selectments meeting in another town. How about Monday, the 13th?
Can't do Monday nights, I don't think. Yeah, I cannot do Monday.
I don't know if I can do all those days.
I have to conduct a dog hearing in another town on the 15th. I'm available only Monday and Thursday.
I'm available Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday that week, but not Monday.
We'll find me in one of those days.
Let's do the 9th. I'm happy to participate remotely. I understand we will not have...
That's the thing, we're going to meet just to hold one letter, like, how useful is that?
That's why I think it's better to meet the next week, when we have everything, we can really put a good draft together on the, I could, let me see what I have...
How about meeting early on the 16th, starting at 5?
Can you do the 13th? Anybody, I know Paul, I'm the only one that has a conflict on it, I think. If that's the case, and it's the negotiation with the school committees that I can, I'll just miss that meeting, because this is more important.
Yeah, 13th works.
Either one's fine, I think. I think it's better, because we want KP to have time to review it, too. So if we get all the input, we draft it, you don't want to do that on the 16th, and that's the next day. We want KP to have a day or two.
So why don't we plan on the 13th, then? And then we can all be here, the 13th and the 16th.
At 7?
Meetings are 7:00.
Yeah, sure.
I could do earlier on the 16th, if that helps.
Doesn't matter.
I don't think, my concern there is that KP wouldn't have time to review it.
Let's just leave it the same. I think we've kind of gotten a habit of having 7:00 meetings. People know that's when we have our meetings, so we'll do 7:00 on the 13th and 7:00 on the 16th. In the meantime, were there any, I know we have a lot of...
Do you want to keep it strictly to this?
Yes, the 13th. This is the only item on the 13th meeting, so if anybody else tries to get on our agenda, say no, it has to be on the 16th. It's the 13th, I really want to dig in, and, Daryl, go ahead. If you have something you want to, that needs to be on TV, you got to come over to the microphone, so, okay.[1344.44][1344.44](laughing).
I'd like to vote for Wes and Walter, that the Board of Health review, what they could synthesize from our letter into your letter, just to make sure that the technical details are incorporated.
Absolutely.
What she said, in case anybody couldn't hear her, was, "The Board of Health would review what we synthesized from their letter into our letter." So I think what we would do on the 13th, when we did that, we could get it to you between the 13th and the 16th, if there's any changes to the piece from you.
Which means the sooner you can get your comments to us, the better.
Yes, yes, we're trying.[1380.04][1380.04](laughing).
Great. Now, we did have a lot of letters that we've reviewed. Did anybody have, I know members from the Planning Board are here, Sean's here, I don't know if anybody from the Fire Department's here, but does anybody up here have any questions for them on any of their letters, or any clarifications?
Just the comment that if a 40B project is going to be denied, it's going to be denied on wetlands or Board of Health, water, sewer issues. And none of the letters have really addressed that. I haven't seen a 40B project ever denied on the basis of traffic. But it's good to mention traffic and things like that, but really, the critical mass here is...
Well, and I think the Planning Board also touched on the same issue that the Butters Council, with the site control issue.
But that applies only to one of the 40B projects.
Right, that's true.
Not, there's two, they filed, they made two separate...
Well, it also applies to the site where they're proposing their wells and septic, or wells, and that, that's on one of the sites, that's, they don't have site control.
It wasn't clear on the map whether that's part of, the well site is part of the 41, or a part of the 31.
I think on the map, from what I saw on the map, it's on, Marian, do you have something?
The well sites are on the parcel that is not under 61B.
What she said was, if you couldn't hear, "The well sites are not, are on the parcel that's not under 61B." But I think the wastewater treatment facility is.
The wastewater treatment facility is.
Is on a 61B parcel.
A Board of Health issue, and I shouldn't speak for the Board of Health, but I think the ledge disruption is also going to be a big issue. In addition to the normal water and septic sources, some ledge disruption's going to be a concern.
Sean addressed that a little bit on his, on the 41 North Main.
The blasting, affect on neighbors, yeah.
Planning Board talked about the ledge removal, well, not to the thing of water quality.
Right.
The one thing, the Planning Board letter is terrific. The one thing, they've been so involved in the master plan, and the affordable housing, and input on all the 40B projects, going back to ancient times when I was on it, I would, I would ask John and Marian to take a look at it, see if you could flesh out the section about the efforts the town has made to increase affordable housing. You had that one carryover paragraph on page 2 to 3 that discusses it. I just think it could be even more fulsome, and you're the, you and the Select Board are the best bodies to do that, because you all were so actively involved with all of the 40Bs, and particularly Coolidge Crossing, so if you wouldn't mind taking a look at that, I think that's a very important theme.
I guess I'll also open it up, if anybody has any questions, comments that haven't been brought up, I'd love, but what I do need you to do is come up to the microphone and identify yourself, so people can hear you out there.
Matt Vitale, Mill Street. Just one comment, kind of wearing my Board of Health hat, it feels like lots of these are happening in silos, so if there's like, an amazing Planning Board letter, it would certainly be helpful to see and circulate that letter.
I think, Diane, you're going to, Diane, can we post all these letters in a full, somewhere on the website, so people can see them?
Yeah, I think just so that they're visible.
Yes, I actually made some copies tonight, for anybody that wants them.
But I think just making those generally available, because I think there's lots of eyes and lots of perspectives, and we might think, "Oh, we're not sure if we're the ones thinking about it, or somebody else is," but if you see their letter, they're not thinking about it, we may want to raise that issue, or have that conversation between the boards, well in advance of the 13th.
Right.
Could I add to that?
Yeah.
Our draft letter, I think we should distribute our draft letter to all the boards and committees, and to the public, in case there are, God forbid, a mistake, or misinterpretation of what somebody has said. And number two, somebody might have a better way to say it, or a good idea that we've overlooked. And if we're approaching it, this is a team effort. And if we're approaching it as, this is a team effort on everybody's part, they should have not just the supporting exhibits, but the, the very letter itself that we're working on.
Diane has copies. She wants to put some over here, if you guys, I, I don't think she has enough for everyone, but if you'd like some, she, you can come get them from her and you can kinda hand them out.
I would just add a little bit of a caveat to Paul's comment, which is drafting by committee is difficult, so I absolutely agree that substantive, uh, errors and points of emphasis are important, but, um, wordsmithing and tone would, I would, I would, I would, I would ask the comments to be as substantive as possible.
Right. Well, and I also wanna remind everybody that this is clearly a draft, so one risk of really having all these draft copies floating around there is, um, is that somebody passes it off as a final copy of what we sent to the state, and there's confusion as to what went out, so.
Just, just wanna throw that out there.
Strengthen your case for our commitment to affordable housing. I think we should include forty, forty years ago, the town built Woodhaven-
Yeah, good point.
Using its own money, didn't get any grants, didn't borrow any state, we raised it ourselves through bondage, and we maintained it, and, um-
Just, just don't compare our record to, to Lincoln, that's all. Just don't compare our record to Lincoln, that's all.
Well, no, we're not gonna compare the record to Lincoln, but I mean, we, before forty Bs were in the dialogue, we made it, we stepped up and made it before any other town around.
We also did Leland Farms.
We did Leland Farms, ten, twenty of them, which is like-
If you have a comment, could you come over to the microphone?
Hello. I'm Artis Flavell, thirty-two Maple Street, and, um, I heard a mention of the ledge disruption that's coming from the Board of Health, and I wanted to, uh, I'm, I'm, I'm the, the canary in the coal mine. I'm the reason that that is, was looked at by the Board of Health, taken up by the Board of Health. I still don't have water that I can drink, 'cause I'm still financially working myself through, ourselves through what happened to us, which is that our water was ruined. We have lived in our house since nineteen ninety-three, when we bought it, and one of the things, the reason we moved here was because of the water. Um, I mean, one of the things we valued about it was, about our house was the water, I should put it that way. Um, never had a problem, and as soon as there was, um, trask built in back of us up on Green Lane, we had, there was a lot of ledge disruption. Um, there were no, um, no, um, uh, sorry, I'm losing the word laws to, give me, yes, regulations, thank you, to cover us. Um, and so it's been a real nightmare. That's gone on for several years now. So it's a real, uh, real concern for the people around, and not necessarily, it's not, some of the water flow issues are predictable, some are less predictable, but, um, it's, it's a real concern. And I just wanted to get up and say that to everybody, um, put a face on it, that's all. Thank you.
Before you leave, could you put that in writing, so we can attach it to, and send it to, uh, Mass Housing?
Yeah, should I?
You can email it to the office, or you can email it to me. Uh, my email address is on the website, so.
Okay, absolutely.
Artis, having seen your water, I would also include the digital pictures that you have of it, that you showed at the Board of Health.
I'm so sorry. Thank you, thanks.
Do I have any other question?
Well, I was gonna suggest is that, um, you know, I think Matt made a good suggestion, and Daryl asked to review our summary after we do. What if we asked each of those, however many boards there are, to write an executive summary, rather than us try to read theirs and distill it down? They could write like a, you know, a paragraph executive summary. We can then start with that, we can tailor it, and at the same time, we send them a request to write the executive summary, we can send them to the link to the website, so they can see each other's draft reports, so that will be a way to communicate with them.
Excellent. Good idea, Jeff, good.
All right?
Yeah, absolutely.
The cover letter will basically have, the still, I still think we digest like five points, or whatever else like that is there. And then, you know, planning board executive summary, conservation executive summary. In the cover letter, they actually be integrated versus just an attachment.
But let them draft the executive summary, then we can grab what we want.
Right, 'cause they're more educated on these specific issues, and, and what comes from them is gonna be more meaningful.
It might save an iteration or a little bit, so yeah.
Okay, um, I think, I think everybody kinda has, uh, knows where we're at and where we're going with it. Lorelei, do you wanna say something?
Sure, sorry.
Go ahead.
Good evening, Lorelei Randa, eight Cider Hill Lane. I heard mention something of a traffic study, and that it's not done this early in the process, and I'm sorry I'm kinda late to the rodeo, but it seems to me that something that should be done by a developer almost immediately, because if there's a big development, the, the traffic is already horrible.
It should be, but it's not required. There's a fundamental guidance, it's very prescribed, the guidance that, that's within our purview at this point. And that's why I'm trying to keep the letter focused on that, 'cause you could just go crazy, you know, I mean, this whole thing from whatever it is, and mention a million points, and hand them a Bible, and they're gonna be like, whatever.
Right.
I think it's very important to stay very, very focused within the purview of what's written into that guidance from Mass Housing.
All right, thank you.
Thanks, Lorelei. Craig, did you wanna say?
Yeah, thanks. Craig Mills, thirty-nine Hunting Lane. Uh, we, uh, we've been working with the, the select board and others to identify a lot of the issues. We've sent in letters, and we very much appreciate that you've paid great attention to those. There are obviously a whole host of issues. We endorse, uh, on behalf, I think, of many of the Butters and, and residents, we endorse the approach that you're taking to this letter. I think we, we believe that it's critical that you address right up front the seven criteria, because that's what Mass Housing pays attention to. So it's absolutely critical that those issues be addressed, and then the, the other issues can be mentioned, but not, not leaning off. The other point I'd make is that I think it's, it again is critical that you incorporate, that you, that you put right in your letter the really important points, and not just cross-reference to other letters. That's really important, uh, because what you don't put in your letter will be viewed sort of de facto as less important than what you put in your letter.
Right.
Uh, I think that's just the way these things are, 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 are written. So, um, I think, I, I think also, um, ob- obviously the letter needs to be much stronger than it is now, and, and, and everyone has endorsed that. One other point that was in the applications was, um, it made it sound like there's, there's, um, a commuter rail station right in town. I mean, it did, it did indicate that, you know, that, that commuter rail and, and other services were within a ten or fif- uh, ten minutes or fifteen minutes, but I think it needs to be said, this is still a rural community. It's not serviced by commuter rail. And in particular, affordable housing residents often need those kinds of services, not five miles away, but right here.
And no bus service as well.
No bus service either. That's right. So I, I think that's just a point that needs to be raised. And, and finally, I think, um, uh, I'm a little bit concerned about your timing. I mean, it's, it's not easy doing, as Chuck, as Chuck mentioned, it's not easy pulling together all of these points into a well-formed letter, especially when you're getting this kind of input from so many people. So I'm a little bit concerned with your, you know, seeing a draft letter on the thirteenth, trying to comment on it and finalize it by the seventeenth. I know how difficult it is to write these kinds of letters. As an individual lawyer, I can't imagine, you know, with this kind of committee approach, that giving yourself just three or four days is going to be enough. So I, from my perspective, I'd rather see you meet next week, see a new draft of a much stronger letter that's along the structure that you've suggested, and then have time to modify that again by early the following week, and then finalize it on the sixteenth. Just my thoughts.
Just if I could comment on that. We, we saw this draft letter at six o'clock tonight.
Six oh six.
Six oh six, and I was asking for it a, a lot earlier. But a lot of people spent a lot of effort to come up with this draft. There's no reason why a draft has to wait to us, for a selectmen's meeting to be presented to the board. The whole idea is to have selectmen supplied with information before, so they can read it, so they can think about it, so that they can sleep on it, and come up with the very best possible. So I'm hoping that even though we set a date of, of, uh, January thirteenth for a meeting, the draft letter will be forthcoming, much sooner than that.
Well, I also- I also think, in that time, as we get drafts, we can have multiple iterations before the thirteenth of, with comments included in it. So if David sends the individual board members copies, we can make comments. It can be changed again before that we come to the thirteenth meeting. I think just because we have our next meeting on the thirteenth, doesn't mean none of us are gonna be working on it between now and then.
I just made an assumption that the same approach might have been taken.
Yeah, I think this one was tough because of the holidays. I mean, literally, we were here two weeks ago, and what's happened in the last two weeks, everybody's been gone, for the most part, for the holidays.
Thank you, Mr. Lebarski.
So, so we're, so we're dealing with that. I think that was part of it. It's been a hard two weeks that, this last because of the holidays, but now I think everybody's back. We can work on multiple iterations between now and the thirteenth, so then by the time we're at the thirteenth, it's really incorporating the letters from the Board of Health and Conservation as they come in, because we're not gonna have the Conservation until closer to the thirteenth, and I think that's a very important piece that we need to highlight.
One, uh, for the board to actually look at a draft as soon as, like, early next year.
I think we all should.
Yeah, you gotta watch the O M L.
Not, not together, I mean, I'm not, I said, that's why I said David will send it to us individually, and we'll send our comments individually back to David, not, we're not going to deliberate over email, because that would be a violation of the open meeting law, so.
But what you can do to comply with the open meeting law is to have David send it to each of us individually, have each of us put together our individual comments and edits, and send it to him individually.
That's what I just said.
Oh, okay.
One, uh, final question. Um, uh, I know that you're trying to appear, and you are objective when it comes to the other projects. The other large project is Coolidge. Were you planning on sending a letter, a s- a specific letter to Mass Housing, supporting or demonstrating your support for that project?
They don't have an application in, in front of them now, so there's no, I mean, there's nothing to address as, as far as Mass Housing's concerned.
Okay, so you're just going to incorporate your support for that in these, in this letter?
Or the town's support over the last two years, and, and that we're having ongoing talks.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Sean, did you have something to add?
I think he should request another extension tomorrow, at the end of the week. The entire extension was taken up by the holidays. Doesn't hurt to ask.
At the meeting, they indicated they would give fifteen days readily. I don't know if they'll give more. I don't know. I mean, it's worth the ask.
They would if you asked for it, but then, I mean, they're good to deal with. I mean, they would grant it, but-
I think we can work at it, and if we find that we're running into something, then, I mean-
Yeah. I'll be talking to her tomorrow, so I can just give her a heads up that might not be-
Marion, if you could come over to the microphone, thank you.
Minor comment.
Just can't, I can't hear you that well from over there, so nobody can. And usually what you have to say is very important, so I want you, everyone to hear it.
Okay, oh, you went. Marion Neutro, twenty-five Prospect Street. Um, as, as a planning board member, but not speaking for the planning board, I'm, I'm also a little bit concerned about the schedule, as Mr. Mills indicated. So I'd suggest that it might be a good idea also to, uh, set a deadline for getting those executive summaries from the various, uh, subboards, and, uh, make sure the boards know about that. Uh, I know the Board of Health and Concom both have complex issues with both of these projects, but they might be able to come up through the same sort of procedure that you're using, and the planning board is used, uh, with an executive summary as soon as possible, so you're sure to be able to digest their main points, uh, before your thirteenth meeting.
And if it's necessary to have another meeting, schedule it. This is important.
Yeah, though, I'd just underscore what I think should be obvious. It's better to do a good letter than to do something that's rushed and doesn't, isn't as effective as it could be. So I'd rather take the time, do it right, get everything assembled, and if we have to ask for more time, we can say, hey, we're, we're almost there. We need a shorter extension of a week or so. They've been very reasonable with other towns, municipalities, in affording an opportunity for reply. If we need it, we should take it. But the important thing is, let's do it right, and not have to then submit amendments, and whoops, here's something we forgot to include.
Or separate letters, I think that, I know what, that was suggested by at least Conservation, but I don't like that idea. I prefer to have everything incorporated together. Daryl, what is your timing, meeting schedule, like, what, do you have an idea of when your next meeting is, when you think you would have an executive summary?
As a board, we voted to have two of us put on board, so, um, just so you know, I've been following the housing board documents, documenting their issues, and matching things up that way, so that should fit into the plan.
Great. And do you have any idea when we'll have it, or?
Well, it's been mostly done, I just have a little preference to schedule it.
Oh, okay. So probably, like you said, this next week, then you think we'd have drafted it. Okay, great.
Is there anybody from Concom here?
I don't think so. Neil just, Neil had sent an email earlier.
Yeah, I read it. They're meeting Thursday.
They're, yeah, that they're not, they're not meeting until the January ninth.
Need to get this done.
But there's, there's not, nothing prohibiting Neil and others from actually drafting something for consideration by the Conservation Commission.
You wanna talk to Allery tomorrow, and just tell her that we're under-
Well, I'll try and reach her by phone.
Okay. Just tell her that we're a little concerned about timing with them not meeting until the ninth.
They already wrote an excellent letter on, a request for us to, to, uh, exercise the right of first refusal. So many of the points that I think or would expect them to make, they've essentially made, but in a different context. So it's not like they have to reinvent the wheel. There's a lot of it, it'd just be lifting things from their prior letter and reorganizing it.
Okay. Well, Diane, you said you'll talk to Allery about that. Okay, great. If we have, do you have a comment, if you could come up to the microphone, please?
Question, which you might have addressed, and just, did you, and so on. Um, my name's Barton Cunzler, forty-first Street, and I just wanted to know a little bit more about the sewage, proposed sewage treatment. That seems to me something that could be problematic. Whose auspices will it be under? And are there any, um, you know, potential, there are potential issues if a plant has prob- like that has problems. So has there been any review of that, or has the applicants really gone into that in detail?
So I brought plans, and on it, that's a item that I can show you, that is a proposed treatment facility, proposed wastewater treatment facility, and then it has the words "by others."
By others. And do they have things like bacterial booms?
That level of detail is, this is an initial screening by Mass Housing to determine feasibility. There's a comprehensive EVA permit it goes through. There's actually state, um, requirements when it comes to the actual treatment system or water supply, and so on like that. This is purposely made simply. It's a screening. It goes through the seven criteria, I spoke about before. And if we go sideways with this and start talking about other things, we'll really lose the attention of Mass Housing. I really think we need to stick to the purview of the seven criteria that's called out.
Yeah, I think, I would endorse that approach, Eric, and Craig, I think you're right. These are administrative regulatory agencies. They are used to dealing with their regs, their requirements.
I don't know who's reviewing this. It could be an intern somewhere looking at this, it's a checkbox of seven things. Seriously, it really could.
They, they publish these criteria, that's what we need to track.
I know, and there's a million things, like I said before, that you can look at in these developments, and water waste treatment being just like one of, like, many, many. And there are other avenues that go through there, but it's important to stick to our criteria.
All right, do I have any other questions, comments? If not, we're gonna move on to our next agenda item. Thank you all for coming. Appreciate seeing everyone. Oh, thank you.
Well, the Historic Commission, the Star Commission, the Butters Committee, and then he just talked about the Concom.
I'm just gonna give it a few minutes for the room to clear out a little bit. Nobody's gonna hear a thing we say.
Hi.
Miles would come in here.
Ready? Okay.
I was waiting for a change.
So, sorry for the delay, um, but back to our agenda. Under the consideration of administrative items, we, the finance director isn't here tonight, so we're gonna skip that piece. Town administrator, um, twenty-twenty annual town meeting warrant development update?
The only thing was, the, uh, warrant closes on January eighth.
Okay, and we've had some coming in, or we've got?
Yeah.
Okay.
What have we got? Have you got a search?
No, there've only been like, it's been low. It's a low number, like, four or five.
Citizen articles?
No, no, none.
None, no citizen articles.
I know the planning board's gonna have one, on that cluster of housing.
Well, we'll see, I guess, at our next meeting, we'll be able to, I mean, on the sixteenth, we'll discuss that in more depth, yeah, great. Now we have an appointment of monitoring agent for affordable housing?
Yeah, um, Diane picked up the quote in talking to, um, town council. This was requested by the board that we have a continuous monitoring agent, instead of me coming in each time for the board to, um, appoint me as the monitoring agent for a specific project. We would basically have somebody on, um, contract that could, um, fulfill that role, and this person was recommended by council.
By council, by Addie Mae Weiss, and by Gino from the, uh, community.
Okay. I'll have a motion.
Just wanna add that this is an excellent way to proceed, because there's a high level of competence in people who are doing this all the time. They have expertise, familiarity. They're able to act quicker than- they're able to act quicker than us as a board, and our agents having to report to us makes it cumbersome and difficult. And this is the way many towns who are active in the affordable housing arena, this is how they proceed. So it's, it's an important step in modernizing how we are handling affordable housing, particularly now that we have more projects that are coming online.
And maybe could be a very brief point in our 40B letter, saying we just appointed a former house president.
Do I have a, a motion to appoint?
Do you like all three motions?
Yeah, we could make all three at once. Go ahead.
I would move to appoint Rick Ashton as oil burner inspector for a term to expire June 15th, 2023. Move to appoint Adam Redford to the Historical Commission for a term to expire June 15th, 2023. And I move to appoint Elizabeth Rust of ECR Enterprises on an as-needed basis as the town's monitoring agent.
Great. Okay. Do I have a second, Paul?
Second.
All those in favor? Okay. And then, the last thing we have is a personnel update. Do you have anything on that?
Yeah, I just wanted to say that the Council on Aging hired and appointed Renee Montella as assistant director at the COA, and she has already started. There's a five-hour COA position that's being posted, and the sustainability coordinator application deadline has passed, and I'm reviewing those applications to meet, to see if they meet the qualifications, and there are about eight to 10 of those. And I'll be passing those on to Michael Lesser, and then he and I will talk about the, the process. As far as the board, you've already instructed to bring one to three names back. If there's only one that the interview people decide on, then you said to bring just the one back.
Okay.
And that's it.
All right. Do we have any Select Board reports?
I just briefly would note and ask that we observe a moment of silence for Brandon McSweeney, who's a Sherburne Town resident, who was the individual who was killed in the first night construction. He was roughly contemporaneous with some of my kids at Dover Sherburne. It was a tragic accident, so I'm just asking that we have a moment of silence for him.
Sorry to hear that.
She got received. Ms. Jane McSweeney is father.
I don't think we have anything else. One, one note, I know we have, we mentioned Coolidge a little bit earlier, but I've been talking to David. We have somebody from KP Law looking at, what is it, the LIP program?
Yes.
Local Initiative.
Local Initiative Project for, as, as a, like, just talking about what's coming up with Coolidge. Hopefully, I think we're, that's going to become more active, and maybe if we can be proactive as a town, that could be an option for us.
And town council, Darren referred that to another attorney, so we'll be talking to that attorney. We also have the attorney Barbara, I forgot her name, Barbara Huggins-Carboni from KNP, who will be specifically focused on 40B.
Okay.
And then Lee Smith is handling the.
61B.
Yeah.
Okay. A different attorney for every acronym. So, excellent. All right. If that's it, then I'll, oh, did you have anything? Okay. I'll, I'll adjourn to executive session, not to return to open session. Item one, MGL, Chapter 30A, Section 21A, Subsection 3, to discuss strategy with respect to threaten potential litigation. If an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the litigation position of the town and the chair so declares, library. Item two, MGL, Chapter 30A, Section 21A, Subsection 2, to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel, town administrator. I need a second and a roll call vote. Oh, the chair does declare, no, sorry. The motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Johnson. Having a second, we will now have a roll call vote. Mr. Dorensis?
Dorensis votes aye.
Mr. Yon?
Aye.
Mr. Waldron?
Aye.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Morley, aye. Having passed by a vote of five to zero, the open session is now closed, and we will not be returning to open session. We're now in executive session.
Can I just vote in present?